Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for September 23, 2024. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees and matters made confidential under federal law, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, thank you. Have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for September 23, 2024. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of science for armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the father-in-law of Donna Russo and the father-in-law of Elizabeth Di Stefano?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the government, individual liberties, and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, welcome. We're going to start with public comments, did anybody sign up? No? So we're going to go right into the superintendent's report, Ron?
Okay, so we are honoring some very special guests this evening, and I will make my way to the podium to introduce our aeronautics team. So, good evening from the podium now. We have celebrated section championships, we've celebrated league championships, we've celebrated state championships, but we have not celebrated national championships as a school district. And tonight, I'm proud to have joining us this evening, the Yorktown High School Aeronautics Club, known as the Corntographers. This summer, from July 22 to July 24, our aeronautics team competed in the prestigious UAS for STEM competition in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. So, just a quick story about that. When I found out that we were qualifying for a competition in Oshkosh, we began looking at airfare. And then I quickly learned the difficulty of transporting a drone using air travel, and the way bags are handled, and the precision required to handle a drone. So the only way to get to Oshkosh safely with the drone was on a bus across country. So our students bared the conditions, participated, and brought home a national championship to Yorktown. They competed against some of the top competition in the country. And there were five or six different teams that qualified for this very prestigious event in their league, and ours was victorious. I want to offer some commendations, first and foremost, to Mr. Rubio, as the coach of the team and the advisor. He has done just such a wonderful job taking this on, in addition to all of the other hats that he wears for us. He was a willing recipient of this club, and was very open to it and welcomed to it. I want to also acknowledge Senior Sharik Boz. Sharik gave a presentation to me during the 22-23 school year in my conference room. Sharik, I'm sure you remember that presentation that you gave to me. And he was so excited about this idea of bringing aeronautics to Yorktown. And I saw the passion in his eyes, I told him it had my approval, he would need to meet with the school principal to get his approval, and we'd have to find an advisor. And sure enough, we were able to make that happen, or Sharik was able to make that happen, which is just terrific. And now, two years later, we're here celebrating a national championship. And that is something that's so special for our school district. I also want to acknowledge the parents of the program, and some of the volunteers of the program. Mr. Boz has been such a champion of aeronautics in our district, and has done such a nice job in mentoring the team. And parents, I know many of you accompany the children to Oshkosh. I thank you, because a trip out to Oshkosh in the middle of July might not be the most appealing summer vacation, yet you did that, you supported your children, you supported our aeronautics program, and we're the better for it, so I thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Rubio to the podium to just say a few words about the team and their experience in Oshkosh.
Well, first of all, thank you so much to the Board of Education for your support, and to Dr. Hatter for recognizing the kids today and the team. I just want to say a couple of words about the team, and also thank Sharik again, because a couple of years ago, when he came to me, I really didn't know anything about this. But as soon as he sat down, he had like a 20-minute presentation with slides and details, and it was pretty much a science research presentation. I couldn't say no. It was incredible, the vision that Sharik had, and that also the kids then had. So I met a bunch of students, some of them that I had in research, some of them that I didn't have in research, who came together, and, again, in just two years, went from having no club to being national champions. So I think that, you know, really, truly, we have an incredible group of students here in Yorktown. We have an incredible administration and staff and faculty for supporting this between our aeronautics club, between the engineering program, that have provided so many tools for these students to use, science research, and all sorts of opportunities that I think in Yorktown, we really stand out as a community. So I just, again, want to thank the board, and thank Dr. Hatter, and thank Sharik and the team, they've done an incredible job. So I think we have some certificates to give out. So I'm happy to call up the students and congratulate them. As I call your name, come on up, and I think we'll line up and then take a picture, okay? So I'm just going to call your name, students, as I call your name, please come up, and we'll shake your hand, and then we'll stay up here, take a picture, and thank you guys so much. So we'll start with Sharik Boz. Jack, for sure, I know Jack has been out, so he may not have made it tonight, but congratulations, Jack. And finally, Devin Robinson. And congratulations again, thank you guys so much.
Go back there.
And just to close out this recognition, I just want to take a moment to say that not only did we stop at an aeronautics club, we now offer a drone class in our high schools, so the momentum has continued, it's been integrated into our curriculum and our approach. And it's an exciting time, because the lessons that you've learned, not just in drone design and drone technology, but just in the teamwork and the skills that you've built in problem-solving, that's where the world is headed, that's where the world is right now. And I'm just so proud of our students for taking this initiative and taking on the leadership. And the first-place finish is great as well. So this evening, our Board of Education will be accepting a donation. That is the award from the first-place finish. In addition, there's also a drone that will be also accepted at some point, once we get the specs of the drone. But the Board is accepting the donation. If you wanted to do that at this point before you call the meeting to recess, you may want.
Can I have a point of order, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Can I have a motion, except with gratitude, for the Yorktown High School $1,250 per USA STEM Award to aeronautics team from the Academy of Model Aeronautics Foundation?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So, thank you, Mr. Rubio, for taking this on. I think, I'm going to let the whole Board speak, for me, one of the great things about, Ron, what you have done when you've been bringing East Team, is you've been listening to the voices of how to bring the program, and in this case, you listened to the voices of the students. And they brought something they were passionate about, and you can see where East Team goes when you listen to the voices of everybody. So thank you for doing that. Students, we are so proud of you, you guys are amazing. I'm going to pass it over, Mike, do you have anything you want to say?
Great job, obviously, and I think it's, as Jackie mentioned, it's so nice to see everything, you know, the culmination of everything that Dr. Hatter started several years ago, and the passion that you all have and bring to it, really, it's great to see it all come to life, and great job, wonderful accomplishment.
Cheryl?
Just wanted to say congratulations, it's amazing to see what you've done in such a short amount of time. And thank you to Mr. Rubio for giving up your summer and your time, and spending some time in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, this summer, so we appreciate your leadership as well. Thank you.
Rashme?
Well, congratulations, guys. And to Mr. Rubio, I don't know how you do it, I know you have a ninth-period PSYREST class that you teach, so I don't know how you fit this in your day, but you do a phenomenal job here with science research. And Dr. Hatter, this does not happen without your support. I know, when you first came to the district, we started with robotics. We had a high school robotics team, extended that to the middle school, we hosted robotics competitions here, our school teams have done wonderfully. Same for the engineering, not just the club, a three-year sequence, how amazing is that? And now we have same thing for aeronautics, the class and the club. So thank you, Dr. Hatter, for always supporting the students, and kind of, you know, what's coming up in the future, so thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah, congratulations. I think you guys can be so proud of not only what you've accomplished this year, but the foundation you built for the legacy for many years to come. You guys are the starting-up point of that, and you guys went from zero to 60 in such a short period of time, and the possibilities are endless, all thanks to you.
Elena?
Congratulations, and I think the younger students, they really could look up to you. And not only because of aeronautics and droning, but also something that they're passionate with, to go to their administrator, and if they love something, they could start something new, so real inspirations, everybody.
Thank you.
So now, if I know the caseload of the students who are sitting before us tonight, it's quite intense, would it be okay if we just took a two-minute recess to allow them to exit? Okay. So you all can have a quick... Okay. So I just wanted to share a few other items before we have our food service presentation. So the latest episode of the Yorktown Minute is out, and thank you to all who've reached out. I'm happy to hear that it's a useful tool for members of our school community. I do just want to shout out, it's Brian Marchhauser who's putting all of the graphics in the video, it's not me who's doing the videos, I'm speaking to the calendar, but Brian's putting those useful graphics in, so I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Brian's efforts in producing the Yorktown Minute. So Brian, thank you for all of your work, and we'll continue to do that each week, and according to the feedback I've received from members of our community, it's been a useful tool. With regard to just some other celebrations and accolades that our students are receiving, I want to shout out five Yorktown High School students who were named semifinalists in the prestigious 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Dominic Fideli, Karen Yang, Nora Yang, Chinmei Goyle, and Emily Tean. So that, just a terrific, terrific accomplishment. You can read more about the accomplishment on our website, there's a full article posted there with all of the details about the timeline for the finalists being announced, which is February of 2025, and just a little bit more about the National Merit Scholarship Program. And then also, two students were recognized for the NISMAllstate Performance Ensemble, Emily Tean on cello, and Jacqueline Egri on soprano I for our choral program. So congratulations, great things happening all around, and we're just so proud of the work that our students are doing. And equally as exciting, we're going to talk about food service next, and that's something that, truth be told, every child, every day interacts with. When we talk about the student experience and student life, very few things, obviously the academics are prominent, most prominent, and extracurriculars are important, but so is nutrition, and the experience with our food service program. So we talk about this idea of the Yorktown difference. And the important thing about the Yorktown difference is it has to be embedded, and it has to permeate every aspect of our organization. And it is quite visible and quite evident in the food service operation. We have a food service operation that I'm proud of, a food service operation that I don't think many districts can replicate. And it's not just the menus, I think it's the relationship and the responsiveness, and we'll talk about that in a bit, but I do believe that that adds to the Yorktown difference. In the 2024-25 Board of Education areas of focus, student wellness is highlighted as number three, and part of that was obviously social-emotional wellness, mental health wellness, but also nutritional wellness. And so that's always a priority for our school district, and you'll see that play out in the slides that I'm going to share with you. Just a little bit of an introduction to the Witsen's Culinary Group. We issued a bid last spring, in the spring of 2024. Witsen's was the lowest responsible bidder, and they were awarded the contract effective this school year. This is, I just included the enrollment data to give, obviously, our Board is aware of the enrollment data, but to give our community some context with regard to the meals that are being served. There are days where we're in the 90s with regard to percentage of students served in the cafeteria, whether it's through a meal or through an à la carte item. And that's quite a testament to the food service operation that's being run. So new food service provider, what can we expect, what can our community expect? First of all, I want to just take a moment to acknowledge Laura Tolosi, who's in the audience tonight, she's our Director of Wellness, and Laura had an integral role in preparing the bid specifications. And what she did with those bid specifications, in addition, in conjunction with Lisa Sanfilippo, is designed bid specs that really were targeted to retain the current staff. I say it often, that it's not about programs, it's about people. And we have great people who work in our food service operation. And so to craft the bid specs in a way that helped us to retain staff, now it wasn't a foregone conclusion that staff would be retained, but it was important to us to keep the staff, to keep the familiar faces that the children know and have grown accustomed to. We do say hello to a familiar face, but in a different role, and that's Jerry Mucatelli, who's now the Director of our food service operation. Jerry's sitting here in the audience, I'll invite Jerry up in a moment to speak, and to just introduce herself for those who are not familiar with Jerry, and to introduce herself to the community in this role. So Jerry sits in the Director role, and one of the things that I talked about early on that really highlights the Yorktown difference are the relationships, and the dialogue, and the conversations. And I really respect my relationship with Jerry. From the moment we started working together, when I arrived in 2017, Jerry was in her role, and we just established a great relationship throughout COVID, we were there together, responding to student needs. And what I will tell you is, students are very attuned to the lunch menu options, and the food service in the cafeteria, and all of the different aspects of food service. Jerry is so responsive to those needs, to those requests. I'll give you one example, one very, very brief example. We had a superintendent-for-the-day raffle that a elementary school student won, a third grader. The young man came in, and on his agenda was to discuss the lunch menu. And as superintendent-for-the-day, this eight-year-old student wanted to change different aspects of the lunch menu, he surveyed his classmates before coming in, he had real data of real students. He presented those options to Jerry and to Mary Jo at the time, and he said, "We'd like a grilled, a breaded chicken sandwich, we'd like watermelon as a fruit, we would like this side," and I had another student say, "I'd like chicken nuggets and fries." And we said, "Well, we serve those," and he said, "Yes, but never together." And we'd like to see, and this was a first-grade student who said that, by the way. And I will tell you that all of those pieces of student feedback have been incorporated into our menu. And as you look at our menu, you will see student voice in that menu. Jerry does tastings with the middle school and high school students, she actually invited me to a few. They take the feedback from the students, and that's what informs the menu for the upcoming month, or for the upcoming school year. And that, for me, is a big part of the Yorktown difference. So as children look at the menu, in fact, I had the student, I overheard the student say, "That's on the menu because of me." And there's an ownership of the menu, there's a pride in the lunch menu, and I just thank Jerry for her collaborative relationship, we have an excellent partnership, I'm able to call Jerry day or night, and she of me, day or night. And we recognize that we're here for one reason, to serve the students, and to make sure that their experience is a good one. So Jerry is new in that Director role, but the relationship's not a new one, we've had a longstanding, great relationship. The wellness policy continues to be followed, I think this is important for members of our community to hear, we have a very, very robust wellness policy. And again, credit to Mr. Tolosi, credit to the Policy Committee for their work, our Wellness Committee as a district is really active, and they do a great job. So the wellness policy continues to be followed, in fact, that's what guides the bid specs when we bid food service, that's what guides the menu options that we prepare, whether it's a limitation on the menu, or whether it's something we have to substitute. So I just am proud of the nutritional standards that we meet, and the high-quality ingredients that are used. Also, a high standard of service and cleanliness continues. That kitchen is inspected just as a restaurant's kitchen would be inspected. There are surprise inspections that Witsen's will conduct, and there are Department of Health inspections that are conducted of each kitchen. So there are some very, very high standards of cleanliness that our kitchen and cafeterias have to meet, and certainly, they do. And then there are special menu events, that's what you can expect with Witsen's as well. In fact, last week, we had Chef Tony here, and Chef Tony made a whole twist on making pizza here in the district, went into the elementary schools, did a development, a staff development, and a training for the staff, and spoke to children about some of the nutritional aspects of what he made and what he was serving. So just a terrific opportunity to take a traditional pizza and make it a little bit different, and more exciting for students. And so we look forward to welcoming Chef Tony back to our middle school and high school. Lunch menus, just so you're aware, lunch menus appear on our website now in two formats, that's a little bit different from what we've had in the past. Although the interactive menu has always been there, it's just a little more prominent on the Witsen's website. So there's an interactive menu, parents who want to engage in nutritional content, allergen information, that's all there for you to see. But I also recognize the convenience aspect. And for many parents, myself included, on the first day of the month, I print out the menu, I post it on the wall right by the door, so that the kids know what they're having before they leave the house. We are producing PDF menus for convenient printing as well. So you can go to our website, the lunch menus are prominently displayed, that's one of the most trafficked portions of our website, of all the website, that's one of the most Pricing. So what can families expect with regard to pricing? The base meal at the high school is $3.15 for the entree, a carbohydrate, a vegetable, milk, $2.95 K5. Now, if your children are like my children, the à la carte items exceed the cost of the regular-priced meal, because the chips, and the water, and the juices, and all of the other add-ons certainly are not included in that base meal price. That essentially is a food service operation, but before we take questions, I wanted to just take the opportunity to invite Jerry to the podium, to just introduce herself in this capacity as our Food Service Director, and to just say a few words that maybe I would have left out.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Yes, my name is Jerry Mucatelli. I've been with the district for 21 years, and my assistant, Shandee Lopez, has been here for 15. When Aramok lost the bid to Witsen's, my district manager at the time told me if I remained with Aramok, she would relocate me. And I politely said, "No. Yorktown is my home, and it's where I belong. I have an amazing staff, I work with wonderful administrators, and an absolutely incredible leader, Dr. Hatter, and everyone sitting in this panel." So I just want to thank you so much for allowing me to continue working at a district that I love.
Thank you.
So, they're terrific, they're absolutely terrific. If there are any questions that the Board has, I've got three really, really knowledgeable people who can assist in answering those questions if I'm not able to answer them, so if there are any questions, we're happy to take them.
I'll pass up the questions, first to Jerry, thank you for staying with us, we really do appreciate your commitment to us as much as our commitment to you, so thank you very much. Mike? Cheryl?
No, I'm good.
Rashme?
I just wanted to share a little story about, you know, our food service. So during COVID, I remember Jerry was handling all the lunch pickups for our students, and it was probably the only sense of normalcy that the students had, because everything was virtual, the school was virtual, so they were never really here, except for, you know, picking up the lunches, and that was their connection, physical connection to school. So I will never forget that, so thank you, and thank you all for being here.
Lisa?
No questions, just a thank you, thanks for sticking with us. It was important to us that you and your team stay with us, and we're glad that you chose us.
Carolina?
Congratulations on your new role, and thank you so much for staying. I know that you are talked about in the homes of the kids, and you make their day, so thank you.
So, Ron, I actually do have a process question, and it's part of food service, but it's the financial part. So, parents pay on a portal, and sometimes they don't always know how much their kids are spending, so how do they deal with their balances and replenishing? Can you just go through what parents need to do?
That one, I actually know the answer to, because we have three MySchoolBucks accounts in my house, my two children, and in my own MySchoolBucks account. So there's a MySchoolBucks account, which gives you a very detailed accounting of what the child's purchasing. It gives you specifically, whether it's a meal, whether it's, I don't, a snack, and it gives you the name, I just don't want to give names of any specific snacks, but they'll tell you exactly what snack is being purchased, a drink is being purchased, so it gives you a detailed accounting, and when the balance falls short of $10, the primary account holder will get an email notifying them of a low account balance. There are multiple reminders that will go out, directing or guiding the parents through the process of how to replenish funds. So there is, any parent can go onto the MySchoolBucks account and monitor what their child is eating on a daily basis, or, I can't say eating, what they're purchasing or ordering on a daily basis. But what they can also do is add funds and replenish funds there. It comes with a, I believe it's a $3.25 surcharge. However, if somebody's interested in avoiding that surcharge, they can also bring a check to the cashier at their respective school, and the cashier can apply that to the child's lunch balance without having that administrative fee. That's a processing fee that does not go to Witsen's, it does not go to the school district, that goes to the third-party administrator of the school lunch fund program, MySchoolBucks.
Yeah, could I just add, you know, so I had kids in the district and kids in college, and when you put the dollars on your kid's account at college, and you don't spend it by the end of the year, it's gone forever. But my experience here is that if I put the money on, and the end of the school year came, I could either choose to have that rolled over to my next child, or get a refund, right? Is that still the case?
That's still the process, yeah.
So parents should check their kids' accounts often, both for what they're purchasing and for what their balances are, check their emails for their balances, so if something goes too low, you know, we just don't want kids to run negative balances for too long.
Absolutely. So there are ample notifications that are in place, and it's also interesting to see the snacks, and I learned a lot when I went into my kids' MySchoolBucks account, and I'm sure the same could be said if somebody went through my MySchoolBucks account.
I also want to shout out to Laura Tolosi, she's been with us for a long time, she's done a lot in the wellness for us, and, you know, we owe her a lot of thanks for where we are today, so thank you. And I know this bid was not easy, nor was the transition, so thank you very much, too. Anybody else?
So we'll just take another 30-second recess, so if you'd like to depart for tonight, I know you first report 7:00 something in the morning, you're there, 6:45, I'm sorry. So, very good, but thank you all for being here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you first report seven something in the morning. You're there 6:45, I'm sorry. So, very good. But thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go on to board reports. We're gonna start with the Audit Committee. Rashmi?
The committee has a meeting coming up next Tuesday, October 1st, and that is a meeting with the external auditor for the audit report for the year that just ended, end of June. So Lisa and her team, they are working with them to come, you know, finalize the draft of that report, and I think that's it. Is there anything else, Lisa? Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Educational vision. Catalina?
We recently had a meeting, and Christina Cristioni, an AP from the high school, came and gave us a presentation on the new grading system that was told to parents in the high school, and we thought at the meeting that it's, it would be great for her to come and give it to the community and the board, so they're going to come October 7th to give the presentation. At that meeting also, we spoke about transportation and the focus on efficiency and the new different bus routes. So they are coming November, in November, oh, I'm sorry, I have the date here, one of the presentations. So for the, so October 7th is gonna be with the grading system, and in November for transportation.
Thank you. Oh, I'm next. Facilities Projects Committee. So, we met two weeks ago, began reviewing, this time we were reviewing interiors for what Cromhon, Mohansak and Brookside would look like. We just did preliminaries. Everything right now is preliminary. We have a meeting tomorrow in which the Brookside and Mohansak teachers and administrators will be joining us to get their input so we can move on further. We're also working on the fields that is scheduled to go up to SED this week, or went to SED. So it did go to SED. The process for getting the fields approved is not just an SED process, it's multiple layers of state environmental processes, so approval, so we have, it's going to take a while to get done. And we're just continuing on. We meet again tomorrow. So that's where we are with that. Fiscal. Mike?
Nothing updated. Last meeting was June, so we'll meet again once the budget process starts shortly.
Yeah, I think it starts now. Policy. Cheryl?
Sure. We last met on September 5th, and we discussed quite a few policies to include evaluation of superintendent, field trips and excursions, fundraising, advertising, some at request, and some were requests, and some were just, it was the time to, in the cycle, for us to look at them. We have six approvals pending for tonight, policies with changes, and we're next meeting on October 10th.
Terrific. Thank you. Board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the September 9th meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Treasurers, can I have a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report for August 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the Claims Audit Report for August 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And a motion to approve the Extra Classroom Report for August 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Policies. A motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. 1510 fundraising by school organizations, 1511 advertising and solicitation in schools, 1512 distribution of materials through students or instructional staff, 2210 the annual organizational meeting, 4531 field trips and excursions, and 8635 information and data privacy, security breach and notification. Anybody have any questions or comments? So can I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Personnel. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent, a motion that the following be approved for certified personnel. We have appointments, part-time and temporary appointments, other compensation, there's extra duty, additions to the substitute list, some teaching stipends, CTA stipends, coaches and co-curriculars, correction, unpaid leave of absence, and some removals from the substitute list and some resignations under classified personnel. We have civil service appointments, TA stipends, additions to the substitute list, removals from the substitute list, and an unpaid leave of absence.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And at the Business Office, we have a motion to approve the appointment of the attached District-wide Security Safety Team for the 2425 school year.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve Amendment Number Two of the 2223 school removal and sanding-salting services bid between the Yorktown Central School District and Maple Leaf Associates for services at French Hill.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the Yorktown High School trip to Rochester, New York for the NISMAllstate Conference on December 5th to 8th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Budget transfers, a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. District Education, a motion to arrange the placements as of September 23rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the Instructional Service agreements between the Yorktown Central School District as ascending school district and the following schools or school districts as receiving school districts for students from the Yorktown Central School District to attend special education programs in the receiving districts for the 2425 school year, and the schools are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Yes, grants and donations at Yorktown High School, one pair of crutches for the athletic trainer from Ann Clark, and a Cromhon recess carts and recess supplies from the Cromhon PTO.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We thank you very much. We are up to board comments. Mike?
Nothing I haven't said already.
Cheryl?
Yes, I have a comment. On last Friday night, we had a wonderful night at the football game where we were honoring our first responders, and we have such a wonderful relationship with our first responders in town. We had a wonderful crowd that night, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them, because they're a pleasure to work with and they're a wonderful community partner for us. I mean, they show up even tonight. They are in front as part of our, you know, police presence here. So just a huge thank you to all of our first responders. It was such a nice night, and thank you for Dr. Hatter, Mr. Barrett, and everyone else responsible for, you know, pulling that night together, because it was a large crowd, and it was just, it actually went smoothly, even though we, I think, seemed to blow a fuse for the microphone, but it was handled very efficiently and quickly, so thank you.
Rashmi? Lisa?
Dr. Hatter, I gave commendation to the students earlier, but, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed that everyone comments on your leadership, and we wouldn't be where we are without you, so thank you for everything you do.
Catalina?
I, sorry, I have a question, and just an inspiration. I think these children should go speak to the middle schoolers, because they made something happen. So, but also, in the middle school, I saw a lot of these students were juniors or seniors. You know, do we have like a feeder program going in, starting? I know Cromhon does drones, but.
Not yet.
Not yet.
But that's actually one of the conversations that we were having.
Okay, and, again, thank you. I, I'm so, always so impressed when our students come out. Doesn't matter what level they are, they're incredible. They had the initiative to go and to start something they had a passion about, and look